It's past four thirty and we know what that means. It's a party right here. Welcome to all of you who are joining today's WordPress East Spokane Public Library meeting. Um, we will start the evening as always with the land acknowledgement. All Spokane Public Library buildings sit on the traditional homeland to the four bands of the Spokane tribe of Indians. Upper Band, Middle Band, Lower Band, and Chewaile A Band. Since time immemorial, the Spokane Tribe of Indians has lived and cared for these grounds, identifying themselves as flesh of the earth. We pay our respects to their elders, past, present, and emerging. We show gratitude to the land, river, and peoples who have been fishing, hunting, harvesting, and gathering here for generations. May we learn from one another's stories so that we may nurture the relationship of the people of Spokane Tribe and the all of them. Okay. See, do we have any changes in the agenda? From here. Right, thank you. Before we go to the March minutes, I'd like to welcome our new member. Lexi, please tell us.
Um, so I was not prepared for this.
You didn't have to do that.
Um, but I'm really excited to be here. Uh, so I am a Spokane native. I grew up in Spokane and now I'm raising my family here. I just have one daughter. It's three on the three and a half. Um, so toddler stage. And I'm just like, I grew up loving the library and having it be a part of my just everyday life. And so nurturing that in her generation, um, is something I'm excited about. But yeah, I'm just, it's amazing work that you all.
Thank you. And welcome officially. Okay, need to approve the March twenty twenty-five minutes?
If I may.
Your name?
Minutes. So I actually have some grammatical errors in the one in your packet and I forgot to include visitors from last month. So the corrected version is on the back of the packet and that's the copy I would need today.
Sorry again.
No, I also forgot visitors. So there was a lot going on.
So what page?
The very, very back. How we can.
That's the.
Mm-hmm.
Gotcha.
It's mostly just grammatical things, nothing of content necessarily.
All right then, the minutes of the last meeting. Need approval of those. Anyone?
Move to approve the March twenty twenty-five board minutes.
Thank you. You, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We oppose. And the approval of the March twenty twenty-five bills and contributions. One million eight hundred eighty-seven of two hundred and forty-nine dot three four.
I move to approve the March twenty twenty-five bills and contributions in the amount of one million eighty-seven thousand two hundred and forty-nine dollars thirty-four cents.
Second.
Any comments, questions, concerns? All in favor, say aye. We opposed. All right. Nicole.
All right. Thank you and welcome. Appreciate you guys. Um. So for the financial report for operations for March twenty twenty-five. For our cash investments trend, so in March we closed with the ability to pay eighty-nine days worth of operating costs in our available cash and investments. That balance, um, is now one million six hundred twenty-one thousand nine, or sorry, the, the, the balance includes one million six hundred twenty-one thousand nine seventy-nine in reserve capital. And is net of twenty thousand four hundred twenty-two dollars for encumbrances. And that total balance is just over five million. So we're at five million, one eighty-nine, four fifty-two. For the March close, um, and I know we're kind of dwindling down a little bit being at eighty-nine days operating costs. Um, a reminder, one day of operating costs for this year is thirty-nine thousand seven hundred sixty-five dollars. Um, we, we will be expecting our levy little dollars in early May. So we've got that in, in a couple months. Um, again, so we'll replenish our investment a little bit. For the operations expenditure trend for March, the expenditures came to one million eight hundred, eight hundred eighty-seven thousand two hundred and forty-nine dollars. As we just noted, uh, apologize for stumbling on words. I just got back from vacation. So I wrote this while. Um, seven hundred sixty-nine thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars of that amount was for our staff costs. Total capital books of materials purchased were one hundred forty-nine thousand two hundred and twelve dollars. Our utilities charges for all the branches at total fifty-five thousand two hundred and twenty-three. Um, again, with central being the majority of that at thirty-four thousand hundred and ten, that's of course our largest building. So it's our biggest cost. Uh, we should see some savings now that the sun's out. So I expect that to kind of dwindle a little bit through the coming months. Um, let's see where am I? Our third-party security, uh, charges total twenty-two thousand eight hundred thirty-eight dollars. We paid for, um, annual software and licensing for our public printing and scanning stations. That amount for the annual, um. Software and licensing was sixteen thousand six hundred ninety-two dollars. Uh, we paid a small amount of interfund charges this month just for, um, our, our IT charge and for, uh, fuel. That totaled eight thousand eight hundred fifty-seven dollars. Uh, we also had, um. A replacement purchase of a glass panel on our RFID gate at the central branch at the south entrance that was broken again, uh, by a customer. That is a capital improvement since it exceeds five thousand dollars per our policy. Um, however. Uh, as of twenty twenty-five, the deductible fresh threshold for our insurance. Uh, is a ten thousand dollar minimum. So it did not qualify for an insurance claim. Any questions on operations before I move to a bond update?
Is the insurance deductible work similar to? Like regular insurance where having paid five thousand out of pocket, then the next cost or it's only covering things that cost more than ten.
It's only things that cost over ten.
But thank you.
And it's, it's by its.
Well, okay.
So it's not one for the whole year. Any other questions? So for the bond update for March, uh, there were no expenditures. So that part's pretty easy to go over. Um, we're pretty much wrapping stuff up at this point. Uh, then the twenty-four seven. Uh, kiosk at Nevada has been installed. Tara did lots of work on that. I know it was a little bit painful, but it looks fantastic. And I believe we'll be getting that wrapped soon. Yes, okay. I'm excited to, to see it wrapped and finalized. Um, the electricity for the library equipment and all the structures is now turned on and we're going to be receiving invoices from Avista soon for our portion, which is a separate meter. And Thrive International is now in the process of preparing for construction. Uh. Their dwelling, which, um, not, not just the, um, apartments, but it will also include library community space. Uh, no information on what that looks like yet, but they're, they're preparing for it. So that's pretty exciting. Uh, so below that you see a projection snapshot here by site as of the end of March and basically our remaining. Uh, balances by, by a location. A lot of those are just in, in conferences that we're waiting on. The Department of Revenue approval letters from as well as, uh, PMO. Uh, let's see, here's another snapshot of our total public works projects. So we've had sixty of public works projects for the bond since it started. Got one active, one sent for closure and the rest are done. So moving on, I like it. Do we have, um, it's not a very exciting month for bond again. All those one hundred percent. So yeah, it really is. I, I'm very excited. Uh, my, my staff member, Minnie is ecstatic. She did a lot of work for this. So it'll be nice for her to, to move on to some, some other projects eventually. So. Um, any questions around bonds? Okay. And for our business updates, um, I just have a really exciting one. Um, so in March, the CFO, the, the city CFO Matt Boston. Held a finance meeting, uh, meeting for all accountants and we started some team building. And it was almost similar to our vision twenty thirty plan meeting that, that we had where we're just kind of setting goals and really identifying what some issues are. Where the communication bottlenecks might lie or not exist. Um, and those are going to be taking place quarterly. It was actually a lot of fun. And it was nice to meet some faces who I've really emailed with and everybody's just really looking forward to, to those going forward. So excited.
Is this something that's going to happen fairly regularly?
Uh, every quarter. Yep. It used to happen a long time ago, pre-COVID, um, but I don't, they weren't very effective. Uh, with the new CFO onboard, I think it's going to be a lot more engaging than it has been in the past. Uh, no.
All right. Um, skip over the chairman's report.
All right. I have submitted a written report. Uh, highlights, uh, our public surveying for engagement around Vision twenty thirty, uh, continues. That'll be open. June. Thanks to marketing for getting the word out. Uh, they've been highlighting different topics every few weeks. I'm getting some good engagement around, uh, those topics. Last week I attended the Washington Library Association Conference in Toluamun. Uh, lots of talk about the impact of executive orders around the IMLS as well as the NEH, how that's going to be impacting our communities. Services we can offer, a lot of focus and talk, or especially in the rural communities of, of the state because often. These are the dollars that they could use for cultural programming and library services. Uh, in fact, uh, we just received a notification from the state library that, uh, Palace project will be discontinued. This is one of our digital. Materials, platforms, uh, be. Going away in May. And state libraries now are preparing for playoffs with their staff. Uh, so we will likely see, uh, some pretty drastic cuts in their ability to support. Uh, and the services that they provide to libraries. State. Um. Deep breath after that one. Uh, as far as our DEI efforts go, uh, in honor of National Arab American Heritage Month, we did publish a book list of. Public titles and by Arab and Arab American writers. Reflection. Uh, and actually today, uh, there was, uh. Then the Central Library. For the first annual international art and cultural festival and that was. Partnership with, uh, Thrive International. I didn't get to see it. I was on my way to cabinet outdoor as that was beginning, but, uh. Well. And our next staff discussion for interested staff will be blind spot and it talks about, uh, hidden biases that we, we hold as humans. So we'll be looking forward to that discussion. Nicole had mentioned the final, uh, kiosk being installed at the Nevada site. Recent usage is indicated in case you're curious, the, uh, kiosk located at the Yokes in the Leita Valley continues to be the most popular one in our system. Uh, in a proud moment, uh, Molly Coffey was appointed to the program for cooperative cataloging. The Library of Congress Task Group. And, uh, sub-group that she'll be on is on AI or something, say A1. Uh, and machine learning for cataloging and metadata. Um. So really great to see her, uh, rise to efforts that will have national impact for libraries. Uh, we're currently, we included our staff engagement. Survey in March and we're currently going over the results. Uh, overall, they were pretty positive. Uh, gonna be looking for areas that we can, uh, continue on or improve in and we'll re-report for this month. Uh, our star spotlight for March. It's, uh, Edie Bachin. And actually do an amazing job here at Shadle Park Library, keeping the facility, uh, clean and. Really has, she really has a really great detail, attention to detail and dedication to her job. So thank you. And I recently met with, uh, folks from the city and continuing to, uh, plan out. Our engagement around future, future budget scenarios. Um, so some productive meetings with. Councilmember Kat Cart in particular. That's all. I've got any questions?
Well, one thing that I'll bring up is. Since both of us are dealing with organizations that have been. Using and being part of difficult times, I can tell you that a lot of what you're going through are similar to what we are. And for all of us, particularly all of us in and around this region. It's important for us to not only be aware of what's going on, but more importantly, how we can collaborate as best we can. To make sure that we can, as a group. Be as available as we can for all of the people out there we can work with, work for, and hope to continue to work with around. All of the different communities we serve. So.
And we're starting, I mean, I'm sure you're seeing at your level, uh, as well in your area, but a lot of collaboration at the national level. Associations. See how this all plays out. Um, in the coming months and. Please. It's. The work that we're all doing is really important to our communities and needs to.
Any questions?
And.
Hey. Here. Um, is councilmember, was he? Don't see them online. Right. Amanda.
Okay. Um, hi, I'm Amanda. I'm the marketing director, um, for Alaska. I'll introduce you. Hi, everybody. And then we also, on my team, I have Alina and Skylar. So. Um, all the work that I'm going to tell you about today, this team, our team, complete. Um, so some of the highlights for April were the Library Giving Day campaign. Um, Library Giving Day was on the auspicious day of April first. So we, Skylar did a good job of trying to use that to our advantage. It's not a joke. We do want your money, need your money. Um, and I did hear that the campaign raised nearly or up to.
Nine thousand.
Nine thousand. Okay. So double up.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that was exciting and thanks to Skylar's campaign and, um, some kind of funny approaches to something that it's hard to ask for money. So it was kind of a nice advantage to. Um, make it a little bit of a joke, but also a serious, serious request. Uh, we did publicly announce the new hours, um, that will be going into effect on June eighth. Uh, so we had kind of a slow roll out of that where we did personal outreach to customers that we know use the library after hours or in those evening hours for meeting rooms. So we did personal outreach to them, letting them know that that would still be available to them through a, a booking process through Kira, our special events coordinator. Um, and then we did a broader announcement using our email platform, which is how we do most of our announcements. Um, and then we also have some signage that will be going up closer to the. Closer to the date that the hours will be changing. Um, so that's in motion and we got a couple of comments about the change in hours, but not a big pushback in by any means. So that was refreshing to see. Uh, the Vision twenty thirty campaign is ongoing. As Andrew mentioned, you see the image here at the bottom where it says our next chapter, that is a. Uh, twenty-four by thirty-six poster board that is on display at each location. And then we're periodically requesting feedback in all of the different categories. This week is economic development, um, again, using our social media and our email platform to, um. Request feedback on those. And so continuing engagement, that'll just be a slow drip on that all the way through June. Um, our Lilac City Local ish, uh, latest issue of Lilac City Local was published. You have copies in front of you there. So take a look at that. We had National Library Week campaign. Last week where we honored our, um, employees on Library Appreciation Day and also just participated kind of more on a social media front, um. With people celebrating that. And then if all of that isn't enough, April was just a very busy month for us as far as, um, heritage months and other months that are being observed. So we have poetry month. Um, this month. So we've got poetry lists on our, on our website as well as the number of poetry events. It's Autism Awareness Month. We've got a blog on the website about autism awareness as well as book, book, uh, displays in all of the branches. It's Arab American Heritage Month, as Andrew mentioned, gardening month. Food drive, there's a food drive happening at all. And that's not a heritage month, but there's a food drive happening, um, at all of the locations around Spokane, including Liberty Lake and SCLD. So it's a kind of cool. Example of how we can all, you know, unify around a cause. Um, so there's food drop locations at all of locations, at all of the libraries. Um, and then at the end of this month, we have the Friends of the Library Book Sale coming up here at Shadle Park Library. So you'll see promotions about that as well. Um. Hmm. Oh, we also had a great month as far as burned media, um, looking back at March. We had waterwide coverage, kindergarten readiness coverage. Crem has been doing a series on STEM programming. So they've come to several of our STEM events with Kathy Bachin and interviewed her. Um, we had some coverage that's really useful on the audiobook ebook pricing, um, getting some education to the public out about that. That's just not this. Super cheap offering that we have for you, that that actually does cost a lot of money. Um, and then coverage about Library Giving Day and the Lilac City Book Festival. Um, so April, April is in full swing and it's, yeah, a good month for us and that concludes. Any questions? Full spring. I, I said swing, but I should have said whole spring.
How nice of me to call her out.
I know, yeah. I missed opportunity.
I have a question about the, uh. Vision twenty thirty engagement.
Mm-hmm.
Right, was on there playing fascinating.
Okay, yeah.
Words that people say.
Uh-huh.
Uh. Oh, an interesting like formatting thing because you rate a statement, whether you agree or disagree. But there were a couple that somebody would say something like. Public library should be for everyone. And then the like, explain your answer would be like, actually I hate people. Dramatic example, no one actually said that, but a contrast. And then you would have to agree or disagree. And some were, I don't know if there's.
That is a way the thought exchange is set up to have kind of that paired statement there. So I think you have to use your best judgment about how you would rate that.
This should be the same kind of thing.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So I mean, there is some. Some personal interpretation, I guess, both on your part and the part of the person.
Yeah.
Putting their thoughts in there.
Yeah. It's very, uh.
Could you give us a? Preview of that?
Oh, sure. You're all welcome to.
Yeah.
Pop in there and, and rate comments or, or just peruse, uh, so that you can see what's, what's happening in there.
It's an option.
Monitoring, but lightly because I, I think we want kind of all of the content to come in and be able to accept it at the end. So it's kind of on the peak, but I also. Waiting to really dive in until it's all collected.
And those contradictory thoughts tend to get read it down anyway.
Yeah.
Very quickly.
Yeah, like the, you don't make any sense. I can't agree. Yeah, exactly.
I learned so much about you.
Seen a lot about people.
Well, that's.
Jason, you see, I didn't. At height. I'll set up straight. I'm Jason. I'm the community engagement manager. My team, um, does all the public programming events and professional services around the system. Um. In March, had almost six thousand people come, which is up from the last couple of months. So it was a busy month, three hundred and sixty-seven total programs. Lots of adult programs, ninety-seven in the month of March.
Slow month.
Yes, slow month. We, uh, some of the highlights, we, um, partnered with Trans Spokane to host the Trans Day of Visibility Art Show at Central and had. Three hundred and forty-two people show up for that event. It's very successful. It's the first time we part. They did it last year in our events room and didn't tell us about it. So this year. We said, why don't you let us help you out on this? We'll partner with you. So, um, that was a great event that we had at Central. We also hosted, as we talked about last time, International Women's Day. With two hundred and twenty-five people came to that in March, um. In youth programming, uh, kindergarten countdown storytimes continue to be. The winner of the impact score contest. They have like the top ten scores this time and that's. A really impactful thing that we do. Um, but the highest attended youth program was a toddler storytime. With ninety-one people, which seems insane. It'd be a crazy room to be in, but that's continually happening over and over again with our, our toddler storytimes. Um. Let's see here. See, that Sherman is going to talk a lot about Lilac City Book Festival probably. So that was a big highlight. Um, as you said, today at Central, actually probably still happening for the next few minutes was the partnership with Thrive, the International Art and. Art Artists and Cultural Festival. Um, artists from. They're in Spokane, but from other parts of the world are on display. All their works on display up there at Central. It's a really good event. Don't have attendance on that, but it was well attended and really good food, really good baklava. If anyone wants to head back over there afterwards.
It's all gone. It was gone?
Yeah.
They had a lot.
Yeah.
But yeah, I mean, just. Continues to be busy every single month with programs. And, uh. Impact scores, which our impact score is a way that we evaluate our, uh, programming, both before we do it. The calculator that we go through and figure out is, does this meet our, our minimum standards to have a program? And then afterwards we factor in some, and it's, uh, back to, to get a final score. So again, another, and that chart, you see this crazy thing here? I could explain it to you if you'd like, but that's kind of just charting all of our programming and where it lands on our, on our score. And I can talk to you more about it personally if you'd like.
Thank you. You answered my question. Yeah.
Any questions?
Youth impact and the adult impact scores.
You asked me this last month.
Yeah.
I must have answered it well. No, um. I've been trying, at the beginning, we wanted to have a single calculator for both and, but it just was, there's questions that don't make sense for the. Adult programming and there's questions that don't make sense for the youth program. So we kind of split those off. And now they're just two different, um, systems now. So that's, that seventeen point six two isn't necessarily worse than their eighteen point nine. It's just on their own system. Really, we just use it to see how the programming is tracking along. And if there's stuff that we should be aware of that's falling below the average of. Of the youth programming or adult programming or, or highlight the things that are going above that average. Um. I would love to get them back to being the same scores. I'm trying to figure out the, the next iteration here.
What question?
Yeah.
You feel like there's been a shift on your team in the way that they think about programming now with this? Cause it's been like a year. It's sort of been implemented and.
Um, I would hope so, but I, I don't, I don't know if it's as big of an impact as, uh. It could be. We're still, we're going to reiterate, we're changing the way we're recording them. Karis helped create a, uh. Little app that's going to make it a lot easier to understand for each of them to understand their scores in comparison to their other scores.
Okay.
Um, so hopefully in the next few months, but I think it's, our programming is definitely.
Oh, yeah. It's not to suggest that there's lacking quality by any stretch of the imagination.
The other thing is we set the minimum score, but nobody ever, there's never a program. There's rarely a program that anybody even thinks about doing. That doesn't hit those minimums because they do such great.
Yeah.
Programming already. So.
Yeah.
It's just a way for us to kind of keep the track how it's going.
I have one more question.
Yeah.
Is the art that was, I'm bummed that I missed the event today. Is that art going to be up in Central for a while or was it just for today?
That's just for today. Uh, a lot of it was at the, uh, Chrysalis Gallery. Denny from the Chrysalis Gallery had organized all the artists. He has a lot of that on display there too. So you can still go see that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Yeah.
Um, new business.
We want to. Circle back to item ten.
I, uh, I just flew back PM last week. It was spring break and I've not caught up, but I don't think I really have. Anything library related to the report. I'm sure some of you heard that we had some serious technical difficulties with a guest speaker. Brought his first basement, I think. Um, that's when the buzz about.
The vibe.
How do we get more bandwidth in that room in the library? Um. But. You know. I think also there could have been a hardware option that would have. Um, but, you know, I think also there could have been a hardware option that would have made things a lot better.
Thumb drive. It was a huge presentation.
Yeah, yeah. He does, he does those all over the country. We've seen his, some of us had seen his presentation before, but. I don't know why he was relying on wifi and Bluetooth for that, but um.
And then his work wasn't working.
Yeah, so I don't know how you had to speak all these problems, but lots of people had some. Give a presentation, but that was definitely like. Now. But. The administration, I think, ate it.
Oh, you can show up more than five minutes before you're supposed to start.
Yeah, well, I think. That was actually our fault. I think our transportation person took it on a tour.
Yeah.
And.
It was, it was a medley of.
A medley of disasters. Yeah, so I don't know if there's a way to look into absolutely idiot-proofing, but I feel like there are a lot of options in that room usually.
Right.
So. But.
This will be the time when I would say there's never an idiot when you need one.
I wasn't.
Well, yeah. That tells me a lot.
This is central?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, beautiful space and should have, should have been great.
We're always looking at it and always making adjustments.
Yeah. But I think he was cranky.
Did it ever work?
No, he said picture. He was very angry about having to describe all these slides.
Turned her little laptop around like.
Here at this time.
You got him connected, but it wouldn't transfer over. So.
It wouldn't, he, he wanted like hi- high quality for big screen photos, what he was talking about. Book is lovely. His presentations are usually lovely. I don't think it was his best.
The afternoon.
Okay.
So I think you got it on.
Hey, business.
Okay. So Karis and I are going to give you an update on the Thrive property. Uh, it's been under construction now. For a while and we're, yeah, so we're at a, at a point where we wanted to give you an update um on its current progress and and also what we're going to call it. So, Karis, why don't you start us off?
Yeah, so just as a quick refresher, I'm Karis. I'm deputy director here at the library. And um, we've been working on this project on our Nevada Street property, which I'm gonna give a little bit of an overview just to catch you up a little bit, Alexi. So um.
I'm so sorry, Ken. My cursor is right down there, but it's, oh, I was like, but it's making me. Bless. Just say picture, I think, look. Yeah, I'm picturesque. We're ready.
All right. So um, this project is a collaboration, really cool collaboration between the library and Thrive International, who we've talked about a lot today. Are you familiar with Thrive?
Yes.
Okay. Well, uh, long story short, the library has owned this parcel of land for decades. And we've tried to sell it many times, but we've had a lot of trouble because it's got a sewer pipe running down the middle of it. So everybody who tries to buy it ends up backing out because they can't build on top of it. So um, we, as part of our bond project, we were installing twenty four seven library kiosks around the city, and we wanted to put one in this North Nevada area. And we couldn't find any places to co-locate with. Um, we kept trying to approach businesses and getting uh turned down for different logistical reasons or just non-interest. And it just so happened that we had this plot of land that was in that area. And so we started envisioning something different. And we thought uh that if we put the kiosk there, our best practices tell us that we need to co-locate that with some other amenity that will draw traffic. So we had this idea of putting some garden spaces there, and then Thrive International got involved because they were looking for a place to do some development. And in the end, we end up with this property that's this collaboration, that's got uh a greenhouse, a geodesic dome. Uh, community room that's inside of the apartment buildings, and there's forty five units of affordable housing, fifty percent of which is dedicated to refugees. Um, there's, oh, there's also going to be a playground there. Um, so the, uh, the idea is that we bring some of our environmental gardening program and collaboration stuff. To this property, which allows for the refugees to kind of co-mingle with residents and create. A community that allows them to really integrate and uh become part of Spokane. And we're finalizing the branding and the name, both with input from our staff and from Thrive. And our goal is to come up with a brand that reflects our values of cooperation, kindness, and welcome. And Amanda will tell you a little bit more about that.
So we realized early on that this project needed a name and a brand that was separate from Thrive and the library. So similar to the Hive. Which is a partnership between Spokane Public Schools and the library. We needed something to call this. Um, that wasn't the library or Thrive, so that it was something unique. Um, so in mid twenty twenty four, mid to late twenty twenty four, I put out a call for uh agencies to create a brand for this partnership. Um, with the goals of naming the property, um creating a brand identity, telling the story of the part that tells the story of the partnership. And in a compelling and inspirational way, because it's a really, it's a cool project for Spokane um and for the library. Um. And so, and also solidify the, this partnership between Thrive and the library by creating this kind of inspirational brand identity. So we selected H, H with R creative. Um, they had close ties to Spokane. I think they're kind of both based in Seattle and Spokane, but they're a Washington-based agency. They knew the project. They had already heard about the project and were excited to work on it, which is always kind of a nice thing to hear, especially at the library, like everybody who really gets it and like understands the project. Um, and prior to selecting the final logo and name, we did market testing with our staff at the library as well as with Thrive. Um, and respondents remarked that the logo ma- and the logo and the name and the idea around it made them think of. Words like together, cooperation, care, compassion, love, safety, connection, friendliness, hopeful, kindness and welcoming. And now I just built it up that it's just this inspiring thing. But without further ado, the name of the property is B. And B aims to create a different kind of reality, a better kind of space. Um, it's inspired by um the, the sense of belonging and and being safe, being whole. Um, and you know, it's very aspirational to, a call to act to Spokane to find, you know, find a way to be present in the space. Um, but we're really excited about it. We think it's beautiful. It does. Thank you. I, you know, I also, I love the color palette too. It's reminiscent, it's different from the library's color palette, but it kind of echoes the Hive color palette. Um, if you turn to the next page, Elena. Uh, so here are some of the brand pillars of the, the brand, community, hope, safety, connection, innovation. Um, and B, like to Sharma's point, it's about the heart, the heart of the community, um, communities that need connection and safety, whether you're a refugee or a long-term resident of Spokane. Um, really beautiful color palette, and they created a lot of really beautiful patterns for us. So. Very in the, the stages of infancy about how this will be used in the space, but I can see some of these patterns being used maybe in the finishes in the building, um, when we get to that point. Um, but really excited about. Everyone belongs.
Yeah.
So Karis will give us a timeline update now.
Yeah, so this is super exciting because our phase of construction is just about done. Um, it finishes up. This month, um, we'll probably be able to get some access to these spaces in May, uh, which will be really cool. Um, immediately afterward, the Thrive apartment construction begins, which creates some conflicts because now our newly finished project is a construction zone again. So access to it becomes a little bit challenging, and we're trying to currently go through how we figure out how to program the. Dome and the greenhouse and maintain access to the twenty four seven kiosk while maintaining safety on the site. So. We can anticipate kind of a slow rollout, um, given that we're not gonna wanna drag a whole bunch of people to a construction zone for programming or something like that. But very exciting that the last part of our, our bond projects are finally coming to a close like right now, like we never have to talk about them again. The uh phase two is gonna begin in May. Um, the. Thrive has already been on site and has been doing site work, um, but they're going to start construction on the apartment buildings in earnest. And they're anticipating about one year uh until completion.
They are planning some sort of groundbreaking ceremony that we'll make sure to inform you all of. Um, don't have details on that yet.
And on this image, you can see uh some of the construction details. So inside the dome, um, there's a uh. It's like an I T closet and a bathroom and stuff um that. Kind of forms the, the center of the classroom space inside the dome. And you see some of the uh. Features of the greenhouse and the twenty four seven kiosk being installed. And you can see in the photo with the blue sky. Um, kind of the visual impact that the dome has from the street. It's really cool when you drive up and actually. See it. It's very different, makes you wonder what it is. And I think that's cool. Next slide, please. These are some renderings uh from Thrive of what the apartment building will look like. And what you see in the lower left corner is kind of a sky view of the entire campus. Um, the building closest to the dome and the greenhouse is where. Our community room will be in the first floor of that uh Thrive apartment building. There are two buildings. You can see right down the middle is devoid of structures because there's a sewer pipe there. Um, and yeah, there uh. There's anything else to say about that? Yep.
We, um, I just wanted to share this recent article that was in the Journal of Business. It kind of acknowledging that the construction will be starting soon on the project, giving an overview again of the partnership. So um, when we launched the announce, or when we announced the partnership, we did get some great um media coverage, and I expect that to continue as this project progresses. So. And there was a new, a new rendering there of the building as well in that piece. And then, so coming soon, I think at a previous meeting, it was asked if we were going to put any signage up about what's happening there. This is a sample of what the, we ordered a banner. Looks like that. We'll be able to put that up on the fence so that people driving by can see that at. However, fast thirty miles an hour that street goes uh and see, you know, understand, understand what's un- underway here. Um, we were careful not to put any dates or specifics on there, but enough to know that um there's a cool project coming to their neighborhood. So. That. Completes the update. Any question?
So the dome is separate from the greenhouse?
Yes, they're side by side.
Okay. What's the? Dome. Super cool looking. So I drive by all the time.
Okay, good.
So I'm like, finally.
What is that?
What's gonna be there? Because it was a question.
Yeah, so i- in material, it's very similar to the greenhouse. And when you go inside, it kind of feels like a greenhouse. Um, so it's gonna, it's. Created in such a way that it will serve s- many of the similar purposes, that that's a greenhouse wood for like growing and stuff like that. But then there's also. Presentation space, so we're hoping that it can be a more educational space than um just a traditional greenhouse. And um, yeah, we just really like the visual impact of the thing.
Really, it's beautiful. And I thought it was a greenhouse that was going there just from the way it looks from the outside. So.
Yeah, our first uh, the first run we're probably gonna do at it is to set the dome and the greenhouse up, kind of similar to the Hive Studios. Where we might find a partner or a community member who wants to take ownership of it for an extended period of time to do something cool. Um, so we might do a, a call for proposals like we've done for the Hive and see what kind of neat stuff comes out of there and. Collaborate with those folks on programming for the public.
Have any sense of what that's gonna cost?
Do we have any sense of what's that gonna cost?
What the, the programming?
Yeah.
Uh, so it would be similar to the Hive where they get the space i- for free in exchange for providing programming to the public. So they get the space. Us, similar to the artist studio, so they get the space for three months hypothetically to um build their orchid business. Potentially, and then they bring people in, I'm making something up, but and then they bring people in for programming through the library, you know, in collaboration with the library on growing orchids or.
Yes, we, we basically have our, our electric bill. We don't purchase any supplies for them, anything like that.
So we wouldn't be paying the people to be in there, and they wouldn't be paying us, but we, yeah, just have to pay to maintain.
Trade in resources.
Yeah, in-kind contributions.
So in that line, then what would the library be responsible as far as in that space? Utilities for the dome? Is there gonna be any other expenses?
Maintenance on the property, um, ju- and just in that area. The rest of the property, it, the property itself is officially owned by Thrive and leased back to us. So we're responsible for that little corner of it, um, but that's it. So very minimal electricity, very minimal uh groundskeeping sort of stuff. It's, it's intended to be a low-cost. Um, project, but there will be some costs associated.
And the awesome thing is that this gives uh amenity to a very underserved area. There's not public space in that area that. Has sort of. Thirty, forty years after. Uh, but we follow through.
Some breeds take longer than others.
Exactly.
This is great. It's.
I love.
From where this first started to where it is now, that's.
Right.
Congratulations. That was really, really well done. And more importantly, it was really done well. And I think that's gonna, if you folks can make this be something that you could duplicate. Around, that has a whole lot of upside. So.
Appreciate that.
Thank you. I'll be quiet.
Like you didn't ask, but have thirty five, fifty percent of forty five of those of purpose would be. Right, reserved for refugees.
I think the number's forty eight now, so more evenly.
I thought they decided they were gonna split.
One of them, yeah. For fits.
Gonna bring people together. They weren't really gonna live together, but that's just how it all shakes out.
Let's move on. Well, let's see, there's all these things that, that these take care of you. So the Friends liaison.
Yes, so this April is the annual meeting, uh, as designated via the bylaws, and that's when we set the uh. Subcommittee's uh for the year that we know we need, as well as the liaisons to our support groups. Um, so first up is uh the Friends liaison. That's currently Danny. Uh, we haven't talked. But, you know, is there interest in going further along?
Oh, I will, yeah.
Other interests?
I will continue to, to serve that role. Also, if someone else is interested, I. Be flexible and easygoing.
All right. So we'll need motions for all these. Motion on the floor for. Danny, who was willing to serve.
Move to have Danny continue as the Friends.
We have any? Uh. Questions, comments, concerns? Hey. Or they first see the Bible, say, aye. Aye. All right.
The next up is the Foundation Liaison, similar story, uh, currently serve Shelby in this role. Very fun.
Yeah, I'm happy to feel like just kind of getting started with that group, so. Yeah, I'm happy to feel like just kind of getting started with that group. So nice to have some continuation.
I move that Shelby continues to serve as the liaison of Spokane Public Library Foundation. Second.
All favors like by by saying aye. Close. All right.
Next is the most popular is the Director of Evaluation Committee. We usually save this for last because there's disputes that happen. I think Laura was on this last year with Mari.
Yep.
Um, did you have interest in continuing along with that since you've been?
I, yes, I'm happy.
Is there anyone that would like to join you? Volunteers.
I move that Mari and Gary serve as the Review Committee for the Executive Director.
Second up.
They were sick to part by saying aye.
Finance Committee is up next. Uh, this one will involve some longer term conversations and planning. We have City Council as well as the Mayor's uh, Administration as we're starting to plan for uh, what's after this current levy expires in twenty twenty-seven. We really need to get a plan in place on that. So normally, uh, Finance Committee has about two, three meetings, hour, hour and a half long. And as we go through greater detailed budget. Um, this one will have a little bit more involvement, starting probably Q four as we engage uh, with Council and Administration. And they should, two additional meetings that we need to have on there. I think Laura was on this last year uh, as well. Mari, I know that you expressed some interest in serving on this. We like to have two people.
I'd be interested.
Mari, Shelby.
Second.
All favors like by saying aye.
And the final one. This is the election of officers. I told Gary before the meeting started that the chair usually serves for two years. But uh, we still need to vote on it if he's willing to serve as Chair and Shelby current Vice Chair.
I think it's thank you.
Shelby is the Vice Chair.
Yes, happy to.
All right.
I move that Gary continues as Chair and Shelby as Vice Chair. Second.
Any comments, questions, concerns? Part of saying aye.
Aye.
Now we get to
Yeah.
Sharma.
Hey, right. Uh, this is a very long-winded title, but uh, welcome to my PowerPoint presentation. I am Sharma Shields. I'm the Writing Education Specialist here at Spokane Public Library. Uh, I love my job. I'm really excited. I get to chat with all of you about some of the events I've done um, in the last few months. I'm just gonna concentrate on three of those, uh, just to give you an idea of of some different uh, activities that I work with here. Um, and so we can go to the first slide. Um, so this is uh, Spokane is Reading. Um, I have been the uh, Chair of Spokane is Reading for the last couple of years. Um, and last year we brought in Deborah Megpie Earling, a bitter root Salish writer from Missoula um, to discuss her novel Perma Red, uh, and it was awesome. She did two events, um, toward the end of October. I can't remember the exact date now. It was Thursday. Uh, you can tell that uh, she had a full house at both events. Um, we were uh, standing room only at the Spokane Valley Library. Um, and then just about filled up seats at uh, the Central Library, which uh, means some big crowds, which is great. Um, so we can go to the next slide here. Oh, I did, can you go back just one second? I just wanted to point out um, the awesome graphics that Amanda did. Uh, she's also on the committee, but you can see right there, yep. Um, and it was probably really fun for her because she got to work with that snake that's on the cover. Um, but this was such a great, uh, we can go to the next slide, sorry. Um, this was such a a great presentation and I think such a great book for Spokane to read because it's set on the Flathead Reservation. Um, it's uh, it centers a bitter root Salish woman um, and an ancestor of Deborah Megpie Earlings. Um, and it just had a big response from people um, in the audience. It's also just absolutely beautiful. And what was so cool about this, I mean beautifully written. Um, what was so cool about this is right around the time we were selecting her, I think we'd chosen the book, but we hadn't notified her yet. Uh, the Atlantic Monthly came out with this huge article about uh, the best great American novels, the the greatest American novels of the last hundred years or something, and she was on it. Uh, Perma Red, it's, it was on it. So that was just so cool that we, she was getting those accolades and getting recognized. And then we got to bring her over. Um, so these are just some, some of the stats from the event. Um, I uh, am not sure exactly how these numbers compare to pre-COVID numbers. Um, but they definitely kind of brought Spokane as reading um, back into, I think, the community's um, uh, literary awareness. So uh, I'm looking forward to this year. We're just about ready to, I think, reach out to a writer. Um, and I'm super excited about it. So um, and I need to get your feedback on that. So uh, we're gonna go uh, to the next slide, please. Um, so another event we did um, was uh, it took place over forty days. It was called Forty Days and Forty Rights. Uh, this was a fully virtual writing prompt program that was put on uh, by a woman, Robin Rousey, who had recently moved to Spokane uh, with her wife to help take care of her mother-in-law. Um, the mom-in-law unfortunately has passed away, so um, she has just recently moved back to LA. I think she got there right as the fires were starting. Um, but while she was here, she had met with me in one of my one-on-one um, writing sessions with people. She had booked an appointment on my bookings calendar. Um, and while she was telling me about this program, um, that she does, I was like, this would be an incredible partnership with the library. Um, and I think uh, I think it turned out to just be uh, really wonderful. We can go to the next slide. Thank you. Um, so uh, how this worked is that people signed up. Uh, turns out they signed up in droves, uh, and her whole system crashed. Uh, the first couple of days that we were getting people signed on. So um, I think we were originally trying to limit it to about two hundred people. I think more than two hundred signed up, but about a hundred and fifty-three of them were, who ended up actively participating and uh, writing and submitting posts. So uh, every email people would, or I'm sorry, every day people will get an email in their inbox with a simple instruction such as write about a childhood bedroom, um, is the example I give here. Um, and then uh, you can see here that people would write on average around four hundred words or so. That's a little more than a page. And then they had the option of sharing that um, publicly with the other people who were writing posts for this as well. Um, so uh, the total word count for Spokane was more than one million, which is so cool. Um, and the participants spent uh, nine hundred and fifty hours writing um, for this event, which was really cool. Um, so uh, these are just quotes from various people. They, they kind of cracked me up because some of them were like, um, this was so much fun and was so challenging. And other people were like, this was so easy and so much fun. Uh, so uh, and then uh, some people, I, somebody here mentions this, this wound up to be therapy for me, which I wasn't expecting. Um, and uh, I just loved seeing all of these different community responses. We even, the day that it closed, uh, got an email from someone saying, I feel like I'm gonna be lonely now that this is done. Um, I've really loved this. Um, so this turned out to be just such a cool, um, very simple program, but really engaged, I think, a lot of writers in the community. Um, and anyone could do it and they could do it from home, which was super fun. Uh, okay, last thing, I'm trying to go really fast so you can all leave early. Um, so the last thing uh, I'll talk about is the Lilac City Book Festival, which uh, we just finished in uh, March. Uh, this was such a fun event. Um, I uh, wanted to create a book festival again for children's writers and illustrators. Um, people that write books, uh, picture books maybe for preschoolers, uh, chapter books for middle readers, books for YA readers, uh, teen readers. And we used to have in the area um, a conference for them that was run by C uh, SCBWI, which stands for the Society for Children's Books, uh, Children's Book Writers and Illustrators. Um, and they're a great group. Um, they had a big change-up of leadership, of course, right around the pandemic. Um, so they hadn't had a conference in probably about ten years. Um, and this was uh, just a chance for us to partner with them again. Uh, we invited Wishing Tree Books to get involved and we did it all in this library. And we had ten events, we had sixteen authors. Um, and I think the end of the day count was about four hundred people, but I think some people stayed for the whole day. And so we're going to event after event, so probably somewhere between three hundred and four hundred people. Um, and yeah, we featured just outstanding writers. Uh, we had uh, Stephanie Oaks there who just won, um, she's won various awards from ALA. Uh, we have Bram Stoker Award winner Laura Semph, um, and just tons of great writers, just sharing their expertise with anyone in the community who wanted to come. Um, so if we go to the next picture, you can see here, this is just some photos from the day. This was an absolute blast. Um, the women smiling here, um, April Eberhart, uh, Jamie Stacy, Donnell Barlow, sorry.
Nope.
Um, Stephanie Courtney and the moderator was Cher Hale. Uh, they did a panel on indie book publishing, uh, because they've all self-published their books and they've, they've all uh, had some success with that. And so uh, that was a packed room. Uh, you can see Laura Semph showing her books uh, toward the bottom there. Um, let's see, who else do we have? We had four writers of uh, and illustrators of picture books. And you can see um, them there, they were all from the Palouse. Uh, and uh, Jemaine Lynn, also from the Palouse, amazing artist. We have her murals around town here, um, one of my favorite artists anywhere. Uh, she's, she's written picture books, so she gave a really great presentation. And then HF Brownfield and Kayla Coombs, who was, you can see her face, she was streaming in from Australia uh, to uh, talk with everybody there. So it was just such a joyful day and um, just the kidlet community, you know, I write fiction for adults, but the kidlet community is just so joyful and fun. And I think everybody just had an absolute blast. And somehow I had no tech difficulties the whole day. And I, we were managing three different rooms and and it just all went seamlessly. So one of my favorite days ever in the library. It was so fun. Um, and then last slide here, uh, so this is just other stuff I've done this year. Um, kind of a random sampling. I do individual booking sessions, um, that people, you know, can sign up. Anyone in the community can meet with me for a half an hour and chat writing. Um, uh, Write Together, oh, whoops, let's see, oh yeah, Write Together uh, is a weekly generative writing group I do. I try to hit every single library. It was just at Hilliard recently, uh, Liberty Park. I'll be at Indian Trail on Friday. Um, we did a six-week workshop. We've done it twice now with uh, the Lambda Award-winning novelist Alexis M. Smith, Introduction to the Novella, um, and that has been just a wonderful program. Uh, Sarah Rooney is gonna do her Poetry for Everyone program with us regularly. Uh, we had partners, partnered events with AMTs, uh, Shan Ray, Maya Jewel Zeller, K. Smith Blum, tons of great writers for that. Um, and upcoming, oh, and we just had the Get Lit Festival, which was so fun. Um, the library at Central always hosts one of the days of Get Lit and um, great showing for those events, too. Um, upcoming, uh, if you haven't heard yet, Thong Nguyen is gonna be here, uh, Central Library on May eighth. That is going to be outstanding. He's a Pulitzer Prize-winning writer. His novel, The Sympathizer, was made into a uh, HBO show, a Mac show. Um, so that's just wonderful that we get to host him there. Um, we have great Humanities Washington speakers coming, Putsada Rang, she'll be here at this library. We hosted her at Liberty Park and she gave one of the best presentations I've ever seen anywhere. Um, so highly recommend coming to that. Um, and Shin Yu Kai will be here. These are both in collaboration with uh, Agents for Collective Liberation here in Spokane. Uh, and then we have the Inland Northwest Poetry Salon, May seventeenth and Zine Fest, May thirty-first. So tons of fun, huge activities for, writing activities for everybody. Oh, I'm sorry, a lot of frenetic energy coming your way. Any questions?
Last year, Zine Fest ran out of tokens to be able to play with a card. And they were just like paper copying tokens, so I'd recommend that they print more of those.
Yeah, and I don't even know if, I don't even know if we can do those this year because now it's fully partnered with the library. So I don't think we're doing, I'm not sure if we can do the tokens.
No, that was a very helpful way to buy Z's if you didn't have cash.
Yeah, yeah. Well, yeah, we'll have to, have to think about that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is really cool. I'm looking forward to seeing this in this next iteration. Thank you for all the time you put into this.
It's a blast. I, I love it. I really do love my job here. It's very fun. Thank you. And thank you, everybody. Um, I love library people, so this is just fun to be in a room with you all.
I'm happy now.
Okay, I'm trying to think if there's anything that I could say that would make any sense and I can't, so. I'm gonna go ahead and say thank you all for this. Um, either motion to adjourn?
Any public comments?
No. Okay, just my good shit. Nope, all right. So then wireless. All right. Um, see for the dub and all that, except your session, time to adjourn. And let's
No.
Okay.
Now I make questions, you want just to leave us on, I'll do it.
Thank you. That'll work. Anyone care to continue? If not, then we are done for today.
You're either here or you're in a hug.